Good evening. I will call the meeting to order and we will rise for the pledge. She's located in the back. My pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are here and accounted for. Are there any announcements prior to beginning the meeting? Okay, I need approval of the agenda for the evening, for the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Approval of the minutes from our October 26th meeting, both the regular meeting and the executive session. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Any correspondence? No? Okay, we have reached their, our first public comment session. We asked that you go to the microphone right there, give your name and address prior to asking the question. No one? Okay. You'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. This evening, we have students from our Academy of Business and Finance who are going to provide an overview of their experiences and I'm going to turn it over to Heather Hartman, who works in our curriculum office and oversees the finance academy.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks and members of Board of Education. Last year, you gave us the opportunity to present the overview of the academy, the curriculum and the work-based learning curriculum. This year, we have something special. We're presenting the students' experience in the academy from the student's perspective. I have three very special students here with me tonight, and that is Caitlin O'Brien. She is a senior. Sophia Borlander, she is a sophomore. And Jared Chelkey, he is a soph- junior. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Caitlin.
Thank you, Mrs. Hartman, and thank you to the board members for inviting us here this evening. The Academy's liaison team is a group of representatives from each cohort. We work together to put on a variety of events for academy students outside of their classroom activities. Our mission is to create awareness, promote positive leadership, and also to create a community of collaboration within our student body. They're forming on a weekly basis and we also are responsible for facilitating all events that the academy puts on. Such projects include our Applebee's fundraising breakfast and also we recruit volunteers for our mock interview and coaching programs. We also host a breakfast mixer in which all grades are invited to attend. In our most recent mixer, Mr. Tom Kucharzky, the CEO of Buffalo Niagara Enterprise, was our guest speaker. He provided insight as to what subjects students should focus on and also what jobs are readily available in the current market. In order to recruit an incoming class with great potential, it's important for us to promote the program. We have representatives at both open houses and orientations and we also have a bulletin board where we post upcoming events. The summer prior to their senior year, academy students are required to complete a 130-hour compensated internship. Students are welcome to interview for a field in which they are interested in pursuing one day. So we have students interning at a wide array of companies such as Pediatric Dentistry, Brookfields, Geico, and Summit Federal Credit Union. I interned at the Bank of Akron over the summer. In my first week, I rotated through various departments such as accounting, marketing, loan administration, and deposit operations. For the remainder of my internship, I was stationed as a teller where I was able to improve both my interpersonal and customer service skills. Now Jared will talk about the junior year experience in the academy.
Thank you, Caitlin. The juniors have been preparing for their internship this whole year. There's been many events put in place to assure their success. We, the juniors, are required to take college and career readiness as one of the requirements for the academy. In that class, we focused on the proper way to write a resume and cover letters in preparation for a mock interview and internship. I found this class to be very beneficial since when I was being interviewed by Craig Ballser from Geico, he commented on how well-developed my resume was and how prepared I was for the interview. Along with college ready, we have had many workshops. One was by Ronder Gierio, who was the Senior Marketing Director for Strelus Corporation and travels the world presenting his method of Foster, which is his own book. It is how to make conversation in the workplace with people you are unfamiliar with. And the mock interview, for the mock interview, we had 17 professional business partners come in to interview the junior class. They were part of the academy. For the interview, I was nervous at first because I've never been professionally interviewed before, but I certainly feel more comfortable now since the first time is always toughest. After we had completed the interview, our results were given to our coaches who we met with two days later. We met with our coaches to talk about our interview results and our future. We discussed our long and short-term goals and what steps we had to take to get there. My coach was Congressman Chris Collins. He wants to school to be a mechanical engineer and it was very fitting since I, in the near future, want to go to college and become an electrical or mechanical engineer. As a member of the academy, each junior gets a 130-hour compensated internship. An internship provides the opportunity to gain hands-on work experience that you just cannot get in the classroom. It also helps you develop your interpersonal skills along with, gives you experience in the workplace setting. I recently went on a field trip to Great Bosh and it was an amazing experience because that is where I want to do my internship. While I was there, I got to tour the building and see the whole process in which they make their progress. I also got the opportunity to ask employees questions about their job and their field in general. Overall, it was a great experience and I'm looking forward to my internship this summer. Next is Sophia with sophomore year.
Thanks, Jared. Through the then, a growing interest to become a part of the academy. Therefore, we needed to put an application process in place. This consists of teacher recommendations and asset and internship. Last year, 105 students applied for 60 positions. I decided to apply because of the unique opportunities that the program offers. We are required to take a track of business-oriented courses such as accounting, Microsoft Office, Principles of Finance, and Financial Management. These classes, workshops, and field trips provide us with the insight of various aspects of the business world and also help us to develop skills that will put us ahead in both the college and career market. The coaching mentor program is new this year and pertains only to the sophomores and juniors. Each student receives their own business partner who remains and guides them all the way through senior year. They meet with you twice a year to discuss your personal career goals. For sophomores, they go over your career interview projects late over the summer and provide you with essential steps required to pursue whichever career you are interested in. I explained to my mentor my desire to become an orthodontist and open my own practice. After listening, she helped me set realistic goals or smart goals in finding out what starting your own business entails. She wrote down different questions I should look up, including specific loans and permits needed. This provided me with a better understanding of how the practice works. In other words, I never really thought deeper into the time and effort it takes into opening your own practice. She now wants to meet in December to discuss my findings. One of our workshops is Dress for Success. Christine Starkey from the Bank of Akron and Jordan Abrams from Dotkins and Company each explain how to present yourself in a professional manner in order to make the best impressions on those you meet. Another field trip available to the sophomores was Rover Shadow Day. Students were able to choose among eight career paths to follow, some of which included Calida Health, Dotkins, McGuire Nursery Home, and the FBI. I shared at the FBI where we were informed of what is required to work for the agency and we were also shown how to analyze crime scenes. Those that visited Calida had a very hands-on experience as students took turns doing test operations using robotic surgery devices. Overall, the coaching program, Dress for Success workshop, and Shadow Day provides students with a unique skill set. I look forward to what the next two years of the academy will bring. Now I will turn it back to Caitlin.
Being a senior and part of the liaison team, I have seen significant growth in this program from the past couple of years, especially through my brother's experiences who is currently a sophomore. I look forward to the continued growth of this program as it provides great opportunities for high school students. Thank you.
Just want to thank the students very much. Do the board members have any questions for the kids?
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your experience.
Yeah, thank you.
Just some things worth mentioning. We do have an advisory board for the Academy of Finance, which is made up of local business people that help us make determinations about the internships for kids. I know Dawn Snyder is here, she's part of our advisory board and we thank her for volunteer service. This year, Heather, last year, we graduated 35 kids from the academy. This year, our anticipation is to graduate.
We have 20 kids in the cohort right now. We have 129 in all three years.
So thanks very much and thanks for sharing your experience, guys. Thanks, Mr. Hartman. Thank you.
Mr. Fettner is the president of the academy board.
Of the academy board. Sorry, Rich. I've needed you to get on TV there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the superintendent's report, Mrs. President.
So Mr. Mancuso?
I have a few attachments to the financial reports for October. The one I did want to highlight is the approval that we received from New York State to go forward with the turf portion of our capital project. And I intend to, hopefully the schedule that I have there is met and we can bring a recommendation to the board at the February meeting for the winning contractor.
Okay.
The other item that we have are the fire inspection reports. They're done a little bit differently now. This is the second year, I believe, that everything is done online. So all the physical checks are done at all the buildings. Reports are accumulated, they're very thick because they go, literally go through every room. And then the superintendent goes online and certifies them. We received the certificates of occupancy for everything. I did give you the little violation list, all the little things that were wrong, very, very minor. None of them accumulated any points, that were negative points on there. So everything was certified immediately. And I do want to say again, this is like the third year in a row that Ledge didn't have a single anything of note. So I'll let Keith Kuick know, he's doing a great job.
And this is just done annually?
Yes.
So this was announced or unannounced?
The fire inspections?
Mm-hmm.
They're all announced, actually. So we let everybody know when they're coming and it's typically how the New York State Code Enforcement Officers do it.
Okay. And does anyone have any questions on the schedule of bills or the check warrant report?
The only question I had, Rick, in the packet, maybe we're going to touch on it, the buses, is?
The GPS.
Yes.
So we are, Deb Hoffman is in the audience and Deb is spearheading, she's one of our head bus drivers, she's spearheading from the transportation end. And we are ready to send a letter out to everybody. So all of our buses are now fit with the GPS locator, which is kind of the icing on the cake because really the mechanism that gets fit on the bus is a mechanism that will give us preventative maintenance calls prior to a bus going down. So the big plus to this program is fewer breakdowns. We can treat something, it'll be much more cost-effective for when there is something to repair. But again, one of the pluses, it's GPS. So we'll be sending that out to everybody. You can do it from your computer, you could do a mobile app, whether it's the Apple or the Android platforms. The apps are free. And you can locate your child's bus no matter where it is.
Do we anticipate when those letters are going to go out?
I'm hoping to get them out either the end of this week or a week from today.
Thank you.
I did have one other question on the, the letter you sent to EME Solutions. I wasn't clear on what.
EME is, every year, we bid printer maintenance. So what happens is we have 250 printers throughout the district. A company comes in, much more cost-effective than us buying toner ourselves. These companies buy the toner at a much reduced rate even from our general services bids. So they come in, they repair, and they put in toner and things like that. Well, the, last year was the first full year that we did this program. The company that we had last year did a great job and part of it is to alleviate some of the workload from our IT guys. This year, the company just wasn't performing up to par. We had too many printers at any given time that were not being repaired in a timely fashion. So we had several meetings with the company and mutually agreed that we will end their contract halfway through the year at the end of December. And the second, the next bidder, who is actually the company we had last year, will take over for this year. And then at the end of this year, just like we would, we will rebid.
So they'll finish the year at the contract price we have?
At their second, yeah, their bid price.
Okay. And I need a motion for F1 through F3.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Dr. Patac for personnel.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Before you have a number of items, beginning with resignations, requests for leaves of absence, requests for reinstatement to active employment, and you also have amendments to previous board action. All of the teachers, given the recent changes in New York State educational law, which now require the physiology that you see in this item appear with every single appointment of a teacher. So in other words, if they don't, if a teacher, a probationary teacher does not score an effective or highly effective score during their probationary period for three to four years and specifically also for their last year prior to earning tenure, they cannot be granted tenure. So this is a caveat.
Covering that.
That we need to enter into each of the appointments. So it's being done retroactively for everyone that's been appointed this year.
You also have the appointments of regular substitute teachers. In most cases, these are individuals replacing people who have requested to extend their childcare leaves of absence. There's one correction on page three, letter D. The subject area should be library media specialist as opposed to special education. Extracurricular, we have just a couple additional advisors at the middle school for quiz bowl and vocal ensemble, pop chorus. Winter sports is finalized with the addition of a coach for the modified swimming team, the appointment of a mentor. Presentation compensation, P6, there's also a typographical error here. It should be $40 per hour and not 20 in additions to the substitute teacher list. You also have an addendum for personnel, for the instructional personnel, which appoints an additional mentor for one of our new regular substitutes, presentation compensation, and one more addition to the substitute teacher list.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on P1 through P7 with the addendum that was listed at your desk? Motion, Ben?
So moved.
Second? Those in favor? Okay. Non-instructional?
You also have an addendum for the non-instructional personnel. Included here are resignations, appointments, greatest appointments, modifications to the substitute list. And the addendum also includes the appointment of two individuals. So we solved our school monitor problem, or the pool monitor, sorry.
Second set arrived.
We're still working on it. We are still working on it. It's a temporary position, it only runs through April and it's not a regular position and so it's not as easy to secure individuals for this.
Should we need to find someone from April 22nd on to the end of the year?
No, that's when the swimming unit ends. So the swimming unit at the middle school and high school run between November 16th and April 22nd.
Okay.
So it's only that duration that we need someone to work in the pool.
And we need two people at the high school pool because of its size.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, motion for approval for P8 through P10.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
For committee on special education, there were 30 meetings this particular month. Again, mostly students who've transferred into the district and needed some type of an amendment to their individual education program. There were five meetings for the preschool committee on special education and nothing unusual or out of the ordinary.
Okay. Any questions? I need a motion to approve one and two.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. We will go on to our discussion about our Board of Ed policy. Second read. Dr. Hicks, did you have any follow-up or additional information to be making us aware of before we open the discussion?
Sure, this is the second reading of the student gender identity policy. It's a policy that we received from our Policy Service Ed, BOSEs, and it contains in it language that mirrors the guidance that has been, that has been sent out from New York State on nondiscriminatory actions towards students who identify as transgender.
Okay. Open it up to discussion. Any questions for Dr. Hicks or comments or further discussion?
So what's our current policy, Dr. Hicks?
Currently, we have anti-harassment and anti-discrimination policies, but we don't specify transgender within them.
And the purpose for this particular policy?
The purpose for this particular policy would be to comport with the guidelines that have been established by the State Education Department.
We can't just keep the policies we have in place?
You can. It's up to the Board of Education to adopt this policy as is, make any changes to the policy that you would see necessary, or table the policy for further discussion and study.
And this is a policy that all districts in the state have to have a conversation about or put into place?
I wouldn't say that all districts in the state would have to put this policy into place. I would say that there's likely to be transgender students in the majority of school districts in New York State, that it's worth having a discussion at the Board of Education level about the elements that exist within this policy.
Okay. What is everyone's pleasure? Would you like more information? The district attorney to come in, our district's attorney to come in and have a conversation or ask questions? Table for another month of review?
So I'd like, I guess, I'd like to understand better, we've got this with BOSEs, we've got the guidance from BOSEs. There are some laws in place. What kind of flexibility do we have with regards to state law versus the guidance, I guess? And what is the, what's the kind of trend, I guess, if, for lack of a better word?
Well, we had gotten the Board of Education the memorandum written by our attorney. Currently, there's New York State law that prohibits discrimination based on sex with admission to particular courses or methods of instruction or participation in athletic teams. Transgender is considered sex within the legal ramifications. The federal law, there's Title IX that prohibits discrimination based totally on sex in school districts that receive federal money. There have been school districts throughout the nation that have established transgender policies that did not comport with guidelines from the federal government and those school districts have had some legal challenges. But this is clearance. It's up to the Board of Education to make policies for clearance and we have a suggested policy that we've provided through Policy Services. But again, the board can make changes to that should they so desire.
And in that policy, gives the administration the direction or the freedom to make the accommodations as needed?
Right. In the policy that currently is on the table? Right. The policy makes recommendations regarding records for students who identify as transgender, the use of pronouns and names by staff and teachers and others within the school district. It also talks about physical education and sports. It also has recommendations for the use of restrooms and locker rooms and other activities and anything that would approximate a uniform.
And would it also be true then if we need to have something in place because we could have a student come from another district where the policy is in place and we need to be able to accommodate their needs or requests?
It's possible that students from another district could participate in a sporting event or some other activity within our building. And having a policy would be a smart thing from the school district's perspective, but again, this is a suggested policy. There is no current law with regard to those activities that we talked about. There is guidance, however, from New York State, which is very specific, that came out this June and August. And the, the language within the policy mirrors that of the guidance.
I guess the main concern with this policy is in regard to the, you know, restroom and locker room usage. This new policy states that a transgender or GNC student is allowed to use the restroom and locker room that corresponds to the student's consistently expressed gender identity at school. So I guess, you know, probably, you know, the main concern would be, would be that. Does this policy open up the bathrooms and the locker rooms to basically, you know, to unisex bathrooms and locker rooms? And what safeguards do we have in place, you know, against that?
Well, I would say that for restrooms and locker rooms, the first order of action would be to have conversation and discussions with the student who has identified as transgender to see what they're comfortable with. There could be a possibility that they would be comfortable with a separate changing area, a private changing area, an area that has some type of a partition in it or some type of a curtain. It's also possible that the student would feel comfortable with just the regular locker room. So I wouldn't say that it would open it unisex. That would not be the case. There would be students of birth sex in that locker room and any student that identified as transgender.
So we're talking about the comfort of a student, possibly at the expense of everybody else, though?
Well, that's true. It's, it's true that the other students within the locker room have the same civil rights as the transgender student. And again, the policy says that we would make all accommodations for students who felt uncomfortable in that particular locker room situation, whether it was a transgender student or whether it was a birth sex student.
And it, it talks about students consistently express gender identity. I guess it's kind of vague. Well, how would you define that or what are the mechanics of that? I mean?
Right.
Or in, my, my problem with it, if you passed it as is, what might be, how we interpret it now as consistently expressed, that might change. It seems kind of vague to me.
Right. And again, that's an evolving concept. Normally, it would be our guidance staff who would have conversations with students regarding their gender identity and a student would have to have complete confidence in that particular gender identity before we'd make a consideration about something like a locker room. So it would be up to us as the school district to properly vet that.
How long does that, would that take, a process like that?
Right.
I mean, I guess the point is, you know, right now, it's kind of, you know, maybe transgender seems to be all the news. How do we know it's not just a passing fad or the whim of the moment? You know, I think we all have things that we get on for a few months and that's all we can think about and a year later, we're not, we don't use that exercise equipment in the basement anymore because that, the whim's over. I mean, maybe that's a bad comparison, but I think the point is we want a policy that would, you know, stand up against the whims of the moment.
I agree. And we would have to trust, trust our professional staff, whether it was psychologists or guidance counselors or teachers who are held in confidence, to have a protocol for making sure that the student who was identifying as transgender was legitimately transgender.
Well, and, and that's, and that's, I think, kind of where my sense is, you know, it's, it is a vague statement, but I think it's, it's a completely contextual statement. So the folks that are closest on the ground, if you will, needs to be able to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. And from a policy perspective, I think we've run the risk of being too specific and then being locked into a policy that actually doesn't meet the needs. So I'm, I'm not necessarily saying that we want to leave it as vague as it is, but I- but I, I think that eliminating all the, the, the flexibility in implementation, I think, is also a, a problem.
Well, I, I think we owe it to the community, though. I think, you know, that we, we attach some rigor to it. And, you know, that it be a little more defined than that, you know? You know, I think, I think it's a concern a lot of parents and the community would have. And I think we owe it to them.
Well, the policy does say that the district will confirm the student's asserted gender identity with documentation it considers appropriate from a parent, guardian, counselor, doctor, psychologist, psychiatrist, or other medical professionals. So, I mean, it's, it's sort of addressed there, but not specifically what, which of those things the district would require.
Correct.
I mean, the, the concerns I have, I mean, I think the policy and, and providing, you know, respect and for all individuals is important. You know, areas where I think we should, you know, remove from our stated policy would be in relation to communal areas like a locker room. And then I also had concern about sex segregated overnight field trips, where you'd be staying in hotel rooms or things like that. Those are the two portions of the, the policy I think we should strike from the policy and then treat on an individual basis with, you know, maybe on a case-by-case basis or... But I think if you establish those as policies, it's, you know, it just opens the door and, and I don't think it's right. I think the rights of, of the majority of the students we need to protect. You know, I think we need to protect the ninety-nine plus percent that are, are not in this situation, that may not feel comfortable with that. I think our problem will be a lot bigger if we put a transgender student in a locker room and then we have fifty other students that want accommodations because they're not comfortable with that. I think that's a, that's a much bigger problem that we could have.
Well, then I think we'll table it for the month and get some answers to some of the questions. I'd also like to see if any school districts that have incorporated the policy, which is generally always on the vague side, and the procedures are where it gets down to the specifics. But I'd be interested to see other districts, how they address those types of things.
I've seen that Lancaster adopted one, almost word for word. But I don't know if that's the case. We've been looking at that.
Okay. Okay. We'll have a public comment in just a moment, so that you have opportunity.
Just so that I'm clear, I will contact the, the attorney for the school district, provide her access to the Board of Education. Would the Board like the attorney at the next board meeting?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and, and specifically, and I think that was alluded to, information about what the districts, other districts, specifically in New York State are doing. Because I mean, we've seen some information about other, other states and kind of where they are, but obviously local context matters.
Because I think it's important that we get it right the first time and not have to go back and amend policy. Okay? Is everyone in agreement to table it for the month until we get some additional information?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we are at the next public comment session. I ask that you go to the microphone and state your name and address, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Joel Lombardo, Northfield. Just curious as to whether or not there's any evaluation of any impact on the budget if you have to implement any of these locker room changes and things of that nature, which could be pretty costly for, for a, a very few number of people.
I'd say specifically, we haven't looked into making any, like, permanent...
Do you see coming down the line?
I think that the district is compelled to have a non-discriminatory policy towards transgender students. I think we have to work with those particular students on what they're comfortable with. I don't know exactly what will happen down the line. But whatever it is, I think we're compelled to make sure that we get it right.
Well, I think we'd be willing to, whatever the cost is, I think we'd be willing to do that if we felt, you know, we were able to meet everybody's needs and, you know, just speaking for myself.
But in some cases, they were talking about putting a curtain on, right?
Correct.
So it shouldn't be huge.
Well, and I think that it's important that we do it right, not just get it done, but do it right.
Kristen Shawalter, Strickler Road. I just had a comment. I have a freshman daughter. And I told her I was coming to the school board meeting tonight, and I asked her how she felt. I thought it's important to know what the students feel. It's not what the administrators feel or the parents feel. I thought I'd ask my ninth grader how she felt. I said, "Maya, how would you feel?" I guess I shouldn't have said her name, but if, if a transgender student changed in your locker room. And she said, "Mom, I feel awkward around the same sex. I don't like to change in my locker room, period." And she said, "And if, and if a person of, maybe they term themselves transgender, but if, if the anatomy was different," she said, "I would feel even more awkward." I said, "Well, what would you do?" And she said, "Well, I would probably change in the bathroom or I wouldn't change at all." That was coming from a ninth grade student. And I think, as Mr. Lotti said, you are going to open up a bigger problem with the forty... I asked her, "How many kids are in your PE locker room at a time?" She said, "Well, usually there's about three classes that change at the same time, Mom." There's ten in a team locker room, and then there's usually..." She broke it down for me, but she said usually about forty to fifty, fifty students. And, and I thought, if you have even half of those trying to change in the bathroom and they have three to five minutes to change before and after, you're going to run into, I think, a considerable problem. And just one last thought, as I put myself in those students' shoes. If I joined a gym and I had someone walk in as I was changing because they were transgender, I feel awkward, whether it's men or women, in changing, but I would feel even more awkward. And I probably would quit that gym. You can call me discriminatory or whatever you want, and it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with personal protection, feeling safe, feeling security. And I think, as you open it up to that, I think a sense of security, a sense of, of well-being will be taken away from, as Mr. Lotti said, ninety-nine point nine of the student body, never knowing what's going to be coming through the door or how they're going to react to a situation. And those are my concerns as a parent, specifically as was stated, the locker room and the bathroom situation. And also, as was stated, the overnight sleepovers, where I think you could almost, as a district, open yourself to even more lawsuits or more problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Cronin, Cloverleaf Circle. I have a son in the high school, and it's my understanding that when he changes in the locker room, particularly during the swimming unit, that the students are all required to have a towel around themselves. And I don't know if that's just an individual policy of the gym teachers or that's a district-wide policy, but I think that's wonderful because it's respecting the privacy of every individual not knowing who's around them. And I'm, I have to say that I'm a little bit surprised that there's even any hesitation to pass a policy like this, which, on the surface, having read the policy, I think it's a wonderfully written policy to protect the district from lawsuits. The, the perceived threat from transgender students is a tiny fraction of the population. I'm surprised that this is an issue because we have gay students in our schools. Is there a policy about where they're changing or where they're sleeping on an, on an overnight? That's a much bigger size of population. And as far as I know, any decisions that are made about that is based on the individual child's behavior. As long as everybody's respecting everybody else's privacy, they're covering themselves with towels. Has it ever been an issue before? I mean, we know we have gay students in our locker rooms. And to the best of my knowledge, they all behave appropriately. And I'm, I've never been made aware of a situation. My son is very open with me. He tells me all the time what, what happens, and he knows gay students. He has a few friends who are gay, and they're changing in the locker room with him. And everybody respects each other's privacy. So if we're already dealing with gay students in the locker room, why would the rare occasion of a transgender student whose genitalia wouldn't even be seen if these policies are being followed of covering yourself with a towel? So where does that get into it?
I'm not sure it's a policy that they have to put a towel around when they change their clothes. It may just happen because of the age group, so...
But they won't stop us from doing that.
Okay.
We'd probably call it a procedure rather than a policy, but...
Sorry to come up again. Kristen Shawalter, Strickler Road. Just because I talked to my daughter today, she, she said, "Mom, it's very awkward. There, we change with towels in front of us," like she said, "for swimming." And she said, "There was a girl," and I'm not going to say what she was wearing, "but she said the towel slipped right in front of me and it was very, very awkward." Just because they're changing with a towel doesn't mean that things are appropriate or covered appropriate at all times. I think we've all tried to, to change with a towel, and it's very awkward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alan Bedenko, Via Sumato. I think, I think one thing is positive. We're not really talking about bathrooms. We're only talking about the locker rooms, so maybe we're at least fifty percent there. What I wanted to say is, in response to Mr. Lotti, you know, your job isn't just to protect the interests of the ninety-nine percent of the majority, it's to protect all of the kids. And especially the kids who are in a very, very small minority for whom this policy is being drafted to protect them from harassment. I mean, if people think that it's awkward for kids to be in a locker room situation, it's going to be awkward no matter what. If you're in ninth grade, tenth grade even, maybe even all the way up to senior year, if you're in a locker room situation and you're basically naked with other kids who aren't members of your family, it's going to be pretty awkward. I would suspect that it would be even more awkward if there was a transgender kid in the locker room who doesn't have the same parts as the other kid in that room. And those are the ones that this policy is designed to help and to protect. I understand that people aren't used to this kind of thing. I understand that it's a new thing. I wouldn't think it's a passing fad or something like that. I don't think that's a fair comment. I think it's something that needs to be taken seriously. And quite frankly, I think that if you have a kid who was born a girl and coming to school every day as a boy and identifies as a boy and wants to use the boys' bathroom and wants to use the boys' locker room, and it goes through the process that's going to be put in place with psychologists and other professionals in consultation with that kid's parents, I don't really see what the problem is. I think that it's pretty self-explanatory. And if reasonable accommodations can be made in order to make sure that neither the transgender student nor the cisgender students feel uncomfortable, that there's really nothing more to talk about. Thanks.
Thank you.
I agree that it would be, it would be just as uncomfortable for, say, a, you know, male transgender, which would be a birth female, to be changing in the girls' locker room. Because, you know, they're dressed as a boy, they're, you know, that would be a very uncomfortable situation, maybe even more so than on the other side. You know, I, and I, I can feel for, you know, for that student and for the other students in either locker room that would be facing that. I think that, you know, the privacy and respect is, is what we're all looking for. And, but the, you know, the laws and some of the enforcement actions that have, that have been taken, I think, maybe go beyond what maybe even common sense would say. I mean, if, if there's, if there is that respect, if there is that privacy for everybody, I don't think anybody has a question. I think it's, it's where, right now, there's uncertainty of what those, what the privacies will be and how that is going to be implemented. And I, and that's, that's where I think, I think the devil is in the details. You know, not in the concepts of it, but in how do we make this work for all students? And if a student says, "No, I don't want that accommodation," then that's, that's where it really becomes problematic. I mean, so that's the difficulty that I see.
Well, it's a case-by-case balancing at that point, right?
Sure.
And I know, I understand what you're saying. I mean, it could be something as simple as having a, you know, staggering the times, right? Having the, I'm sure it's not going to be some kind of large number of students that we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Okay. We're probably talking about a small handful, maybe less than five. So I'm sure just staggering the times, like this kid goes in five minutes earlier than the rest of the class, is something, it could be something as simple as that in terms of accommodation. It doesn't cost anybody anything.
Sure.
But, but the point is, is that in terms of, I, I, I get the sense that people are treating this as if it's something that a kid just wakes up one day and decides, "Hey, I'm a boy today." And I don't think it's as simple as that. And I don't think it's a fair... I, I don't think that that's a fair commentary on what that whole thing is. Might not be something I understand, but it's certainly not something that I'm going to, you know, denigrate.
And that wasn't the criticism I had. I mean, the criticism I was, was exactly that, that it should be a case-by-case basis, that, you know, a blanket policy may, you know, may not be the best way to address it.
Thank you.
It's also important to decide when we do come up with some ideas for accommodations, what happens if the student doesn't accept any of the accommodations? So this is what we need to be prepared for so that we can hear both sides.
Just tilt it down.
Oh, just tilt it down, okay.
There you go.
Good, thanks. Problem solving. Okay. Rachel Pinty, Elvin Chimerbell. I'm a, I go to Clarence High School. I'm a sophomore. I'm a member and was last year of the Gay-Straight Alliance Plus Club at the high school. And I was there last year, and there were only three kids who were in it. And now there are thirty-plus. So it's, I think that it's, kids are becoming more comfortable with themselves and are able to express themselves over, like, gay marriage being legalized this summer and like the, the way things have been, like, evolving. And I would say that, like, I think a school's job is to not only have students graduate, like, successfully, but to respect the integrity of every student, like what Mr. Bedenko said. And, and I don't think it would be a big deal if, like, staggering the times. I mean, if, if I was a student who felt more comfortable changing in a boys' bathroom, then I'd want to change in a boys' bathroom. I don't care if there's other boys in the bathroom, you know? Or, or have, changing in a different room if, if I feel more comfortable. I mean, changing in general is uncomfortable. I mean, you know, I have friends who are gay, I have friends who are straight, I have friends who are transgender. I have a family member who's transgender. So, I mean, I know people really personally and how they feel about this. And, I don't know, I don't think it would be a big deal to stagger times or anything, and that's not something, that's not something that's costly. And I think that that would be a really good solution.
Thank you.
I'm at Jackson. I live on Howard Drive. And I'm also in the GSA with Rachel. And I want to go back to what she said for a second about how drastically we increased in size over the summer. Just like when kids were talking about joining clubs for this year and figuring out where they were going to be in the high school, there were a lot of students that showed interest in our club because they felt more comfortable, like, learning about other people's experiences and identities and being more comfortable with their own. And I understand, like Mrs. Shawalter said, some students aren't comfortable changing in these circumstances because they identify as cisgender and they're not comfortable changing on people with different body parts. But really, there are, people underestimate how accepting kids, especially in the high school, have become. And there's really not a lot of students, I think, who would be very uncomfortable in situations like that. And making the accommodations for transgender students to change in ways they're comfortable with and use bathrooms that they're comfortable using would be really an easy transition for everybody, save for a couple students who might not be comfortable with that. And they can wait until... who might not be comfortable with that. And they can wait until the trans students are done to go in, because there's really not that many, I think, if we take a look at the student population. And I feel like this would be an important issue, to ask students where they stand, because it affects students only. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What else?
Good evening. My name is Susan, and I am from Willowbrook. I believe that we're missing an entire component here. And I ask you, um, what do we truly know about this diagnosis, this situation, this choice of a lifestyle? Do we know the percent of the population that's affected? And I look at each and every one of you, to see what your response is, as I ask you these questions. Do we know developmental stages where identity and conflict occurs? Do we? How many struggling with gender issues return to a healthy state over time? Do we know that? Do we know that statistic? Do we know that number? I'm looking into the eyes of each and every one of you, to see how much you truly know, as you work to make an informed How many turn to drugs or suicide later in life because of unresolved issues? Do you know the answer to that question? I'm a healthcare professional, and I struggle to work with the health of society, because there are so many different influences, not only from the neighborhoods that we live in, the households that we are raised in, but also now, from the internet, and from the many venues of communication that we have access to. So, our students are bombarded with all sorts of information, with regard to their identity, who they are, who they are to become, how are they supposed to act, what are they supposed to wear, what should they look like? Do you know when this happens? That was one of my first questions. Do you know when gender identity issues truly arise? I'm not hearing a response, so I'm going to take that as a no.
Well, and the information I've read, it's by age four.
Yeah. Two to three is the first time that children, "Ah, you have that? I don't have that. What's that? I want one." Okay? Two to three is the age that it starts. That's the gender confusion. By the time a child moves from toddlerhood into prepubescence, and then puberty, it's again accentuated. Because, again, they've got the hormones raging. They've got the, the development of body parts that they didn't see in certain sizes before. So, they're questioning, "What am I supposed to do this? How do I feel? Why are these emotions coming through my body?" You know, "Who am I? Am I a male? Am I a female? Which way do I identify in a stronger way?" And you move into puberty and adolescence, and it happens again. And so now, in society before, prior to the electronic age, we had parents who guided us, we had religious advisors who guided us, we had community neighborhoods. Now we have the internet, now we have different forces and sources that are available to us, to be able to educate us, which can be a wonderful thing, but it can also be challenging as we try to work within the auspices of all the information coming through. So, my question to you is, do you know enough about transgender, about gender identity, to be able to make an informed decision on this policy? I'm pleased to see that you tabled it, and I believe in fairness for everyone who attends this school, but we have to remember that our primary goal is the education of all students. The education of all students. And I tend to, to think that we're turning this into a civil liberties issue, versus an educational issue. So, I'm asking you to just take a really good look at the policy, to identify and answer those questions that I posed to you, and to seek out additional support from the medical community. Because there are studies, and there are doctors out of Saint, of Johns Hopkins, who have done a tremendous amount of research, and talk about the fact that, as we work with students, and provide them with support, with the mental, emotional, and physical support that they need, that they turn out to be healthy individuals all the way around. Thank you.
I can speak only for myself, is that I think the reason why we struggled with it is because we want to do right by everyone that's in the building. Um, it was not a decision, it would have been very easy to just pass the policy as it is, without taking all of the, uh, questions that you posed, and, uh, you know, from other individuals on the board, to answer the question, which is the reason why we said we would table it, so that we would have more, uh, time for discussion. Because it isn't just about, um, one population, however small it is. It's about all of the students that go in the building, as well as the teachers, and also just trying to make it a reality, putting the policy into, uh, place. Um, it's very easy also to come up with a policy, but, um, making it work also takes, uh, some time to make sure that we're doing it the right
Um, my mom has been a behavioral health nurse for twenty-five years, and my dad is an Episcopal priest. So, um, I've had the opportunity to grow up with two very caring and open-minded parents, and we talk about this a lot. And growing up, we've been, like, they've been super open-minded about all this, and I think, given my brothers and I, like, a super, um, like, really, like, cool way to grow up, and, um, like, interacting with people who are different from you. And I don't think, like, I don't think it matters what age you know, you know, what gender you are, or whatever, because the world's in black and white, like that. So, yeah, I don't think the world's in black and white, and I don't think that that, like, whatever age they, they think that, I don't think that that matters. I mean, it's kind of hard to speak for something that, you know, speak about someone when, like, you're not going through the same thing as them.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay. Uh, before you, we have our schedule of meetings. Um, upcoming, the next Board of Ed meeting is, um, December fourteenth, and it's at Clarence Center Elementary, as well as the, uh, beginning of the budget process and our, uh, winter retreat. Does anyone have any other questions, comments, before we, okay, we, uh, have, make a motion to move to executive session, to adjourn the meeting, to move to executive session, purposes discussing confidential student matters?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor? Okay. All meetings end at eight o'clock.